Good evening and welcome to the March Meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask Town of Red Hook Councilwoman Brenda Cagle to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Brenna? Please rise.
(Inaudible) United States of America, in this republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you. Before I start the meeting and give some prepared remarks, there are a few people here tonight that I definitely would like to acknowledge. A gentleman who served this village for 12 years as a trustee, as its mayor, then served us as our State Assemblyman and our County Executive. Gentleman, I'm proud to call my friend County Executive Mark Molinaro. Thank you.[82.54][82.54](Applause). Our representative in the Dutchess County Legislature, Mickey Struensky. Mickey, thank you for coming.[92.11][92.11](Applause). My former Deputy Mayor, Mike Leedy. Mike, thank you very much.[98.82][98.82](Applause). Former trustee and gentleman, I'm proud to have called on from time to time for support. Tony Stefaro. Tony, thank you.[108.32][108.32](Applause). Our justices are here this evening. Howard Clark, John Ludwig. Gentlemen, thank you very much for being here.[117.82][117.82](Applause). And we met Councilwoman Brenda Cagle from the village of Red Hook, our sister village, Brenka Walczek. Brenna, thank you very much for being here.[128.82][128.82](Applause). And a special thank you to my former colleagues at the Dutchess County Clerk's Office. Thank you so much for coming up. You have no idea what it means to me for you to be here tonight, so thank you very much.[141.82][141.82](Applause). Tonight's agenda is a little different from our normal board meetings, and the board has been briefed on reports from the treasurer. However, there are some housekeeping items that we do need to address. That is the minutes of the previous meeting and the previous workshop. You've had an opportunity to review those minutes, and at this point, I have an entertaining motion to approve those minutes as submitted. There are two sets.
So what?
Motion's been made by trustee Bruno. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The next item on your agenda is a treasurer's report from the month of March. You've had an opportunity to review the report. At this point, I have an entertaining motion to approve the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With regards to the treasurer's report, we have to pay the bills for the month of March. We discussed these in the workshop. At this point, I have an entertaining motion to approve payment of the bills.
So moved.
Motion's been made by trustee Schneider. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the record, zoning reports and trustee reports will be made available online with the March minutes. Moving on to regular business, there is one item in your agenda, and that is a budget modification. We discussed this in the workshop, and at this point, I have an entertaining motion to approve the budget modification.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Better late than never. Our former county legislator, Ben Trout. Ben, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it.[257.13][257.13](Applause). I am very fortunate during my tenure in village government to have worked with so many fine officials, elected officials, appointed officials, and those within emergency management. Sheriff Adrian Butch Anderson is unable to be here tonight, but I am very proud to have called and still called the sheriff a friend. This village, as you know, has faced so many challenges just over the last four years, and it was Sheriff Anderson's office that was there to deliver news from time to time that was in so many ways unpleasant, but they always did it with a sense of professionalism and a sense of compassion. The sheriff was unable to be here tonight, however, representing Sheriff Anderson is a gentleman I've learned to call a friend and a partner, and that is Captain John Waris. Captain, the floor is yours.[312.82][312.82](Applause).
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Evening, everybody, and thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to represent the sheriff and the sheriff's office here in Tivoli. Occasionally, as the mayor mentioned, Sheriff Anderson, he's very busy, has a lot of things to go to, a lot of events, a lot of commitments, and he will occasionally ask me or one of the other people in our office to stand in for him or to represent him. When he does that occasionally, and through no fault of his own really, he does fail to mention sometimes some, is this still on? Yes, some rather important details like you may have to speak. So I am prepared to speak only because Mayor Cranna is someone who I also call a friend, and you don't need much preparation to talk about a friend. I was sitting in my office earlier thinking, what am I going to say? You know, what can I say? And when I started to write down notes, and I said to myself, I don't really need to write down too many notes, because when you talk about a friend, you just speak from the heart, so that's what I'm going to do. But I would have appreciated the sheriff as something you don't have to speak ahead of time.[389.63][389.63](Laughter). I do appreciate, though, when I got here, I did find out that I'm speaking ahead of one of the people who I consider one of the best speakers I've ever seen, and that's County Executive Marcus Molinaro. I don't have to go after him, so I do appreciate that. Just a quick story about Tivoli. When I came on the job, I knew next to nothing about Tivoli. I made sergeant in 2001, and previous to making sergeant, I worked as a deputy, but I worked down in the Wappinger-Lagrange area. I knew Tivoli existed, whether it existed, but I never worked up here with any consistency, so I didn't know anybody up here. I never really patrolled up here. So about a month after I made sergeant, I was working midnight shift, and we had a fatal auto accident, a rollover, one car auto accident on Bud's Corners Road. And my lieutenant at the time, who some of you may know was a former lieutenant, Pete Astro, said to me, John, I want you to go up to Bud's Corners Road, because fatal accidents and serious auto accidents need a supervisor, need somebody of the rank of sergeant and above to go to supervise the scene. He said, I want you to go up to this fatal auto accident and, you know, supervise it. Your first one is a sergeant. I said, all right, where is it? And he says, it's on Bud's Corners Road. And I must have had a kind of a blank look on my face, because I said, where? And he said, are you kidding me? You don't know where Bud's Corners Road is? Bud's Corners Road in Red Hook. And I said, all right, I'll go. So I said, you know where it is? He said, yeah, I know where it is, but I want you to go. So get out a map and go find Bud's Corners Road. Long story short, as I go up there, my point by this is I didn't know that many people up here, I didn't know anybody in Tivoli or Red Hook. Fast forward several years to me making captain, actually just before I made captain, my predecessor, Captain Pietro, says to me, you know, I'm going to retire soon, I think, and I'd like you to start meeting people up in the Red Hook, Grand Beck area, and I want to start with Mayor Cranna. He's one of our biggest allies up there, and I really think it'd be good for you to be there. So I'm a little nervous. I don't know what to expect. Like I said, I wasn't very familiar with the area, the people up here, never really worked with the people in government up here. But I have to say, when I met Mayor Cranna and we started to work together, it was really, the pleasure was online. He has been a great person to work with, a fantastic friend, and really, it's just been great to work with you all these years. You know, in law enforcement, when people from law enforcement show up, it's generally not good. People don't call the police because they want to report something nice. It's usually something not very good, so people very often aren't happy to see the police. We always have to, not always, but very oftentimes have to break bad news or arrest people and things like that, so when you have the support of the mayor or government officials, it makes all the difference in the world, I can tell you. It's just, it's a huge thing for law enforcement to have the support of the mayor, the village board, the town board, the county executive, county officials. It makes all the difference in the world. It makes our job much easier when you have to handle things like boating accidents where several people lost their lives, very serious car accidents involving DWYs and things like that, and you've had it all up here. For a little community or a smaller, what's considered a smaller community, you've had a lot of things like that up here, a lot of tough incidents where people lost their lives and things that are very tough to deal with, and it made it much easier for us to have a mayor who I could pick up the phone and say, hey, Brian, this is what we have, and he'll do anything he can to help me, and I know that the same is true on the reverse. We just worked very well together, and it's very much appreciated. So on a personal note, I'd like to thank you for everything you've done for me, for my office, for law enforcement, for Dutchess County in general over the years. It's been my honor and a huge pleasure to work with you. I will miss you as your friend, and, you know, I couldn't ask for a better mayor and a better contact up here. On behalf of the sheriff, the rest of the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office, I have here something from the sheriff which I'll read to you, I'll present it to you afterwards, but I'll read it to you now. Congratulations, Brian Cranna. Thank you for your services and dedication to the residents of Tivoli and the people of Dutchess County, wishing you all the best in your next endeavor. Again, on behalf of the sheriff, people at the sheriff's office, thank you for everything. Good luck, best wishes in your next endeavor, and you'll be missed very much. Thank you.[682.63][682.63](Applause).
Captain, thank you very much. That means a great deal to me, and my sincere thanks to you and your colleagues, and of course to Sheriff Anderson and our undersheriff. Thank you very much. You made difficult times during my tenure easier to deal with, so I greatly appreciate that and appreciate the friendship. As we talk about friendship tonight, the true sign of a friend is when you need them by your side and when you can pick up the phone no matter the time of day or night, and they answer the phone and they are there for you to support you, not only at that time, but afterwards. Our County Executive is one of those friends to me. Mark Molinaro and I became friends before I moved to the village of Tivoli, before I even entered my public service here in the village of Tivoli. There are a few people in this world that I know that I could pick up the phone and they will be there when I need them, and Mark Molinaro was definitely one of those people. As a former mayor, I know I could pick up the phone at any time and ask his advice and his counsel. Sometimes he agreed with me, sometimes he didn't. Sometimes I listened, and sometimes I didn't. Regardless, Mark continues to be a friend and someone whose counsel and advice I continue to seek routinely. 12 years as our mayor, our state assemblyman, and now representing the entire county of Dutchess. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my honor to introduce to our County Executive, Mark Molinaro.[782.82][782.82](Applause).
Thank you for that. I would strongly suggest that you listen to me all the time, but I understand why you wouldn't. And I had a great friend when I became mayor of this village, Woody Neese, who had served the village of Tivoli for several decades, had a lifetime experience, understood every corner, every inch, and probably every personality in the village. And to know that when, through difficult times, and we lived through a few, Woody was there to be of assistance to me. So I would offer to you that, yes, I am your friend, but I also feel a certain obligation to this village that I know that you feel, Brian, and will, I hope carry with you in your retirement as mayor. Before I say a few extra words, because, you know, I had this podium built for me, so it's somewhat comfortable. It's true.
I know.
It's true. This was actually built for my height and everything. Kevin Mallory from the Red Hook Fire Company built this. Isn't this, yeah, this is it.
You take a lot of work.
No, no, it's a little short, you know. Before I say a few extra words, I want to also, though, extend to what I assume, who I assume at 9:01 PM this evening will be the mayor-elect of the village of Tivoli, Joel Griffith. Joel, you too have something that former Judge Arnie Peace said defines an elected official in Tivoli. You are either, you are never a part of Tivoli unless Tivoli is a part of you, and he was very, very clear about that, that this is one of those special places that has always held on, I think, to an important history, to an important personality, and you're only successful here. And I know there are a lot of faces here, whether you're in the fire department or rescue, and I see a lot of friends, town, village justice, longtime residents, new faces. You can only be successful here if it's inside of you. And I have known Joel for a number of years. Actually, Brian, I've known Joel longer than I've known you. Joel and I went to school together. He's a year older than I am, but...[928.82][928.82](Laughter). And I'd like to say, although I take absolutely no credit in his success as an elected official, I do, however, take credit for at least encouraging him to think about it. And I have the greatest amount of pride for you taking over the reins, presumably. I don't want to, you know, it's an unopposed race, even I get nervous.[956.32][956.32](Laughter). When you take over the reins as mayor, I have nothing but great amount of pride, and I'm exceptionally hopeful for you and the village and where you will steer it over your tenure. And that's really what this is about. Brian, you've served this community admirably. You've weathered a good number of storms. In the same respect, you've held this community together and at all the right times. It is not without challenge. This is a challenging, complex, tiny little place with just the greatest personalities, the greatest characters, the greatest stories, and some of the finest and most dedicated residents that I have ever come into contact with, and you led them as this village's mayor with a great amount of not only pride but ability. And I am really very, very grateful and very proud that you succeeded both my predecessor, Mayor Cordier, and myself in service to this community, and you should be proud of that, and we are grateful for it. I want to say this to Tivoli, though. This is a very special community, and I will never forget that. The greatest joy and privilege of my professional and political life was when in 1994, the residents of this village offered me an opportunity to serve. And quite frankly, if you would have kept me and I could have afforded to pay my bills, I may have decided or wanted to stay here much, much longer. In this room are both friends and colleagues, a couple critics, who helped define who we were as a community and for me, what public service is all about. This is a very special place, and quite frankly, I don't think there's many places quite like it, and that's good for all of us. So on behalf of Dutchess County, to Brian Cranna, I extend our congratulations and thanks for your years of service. But to the village of Tivoli, on behalf of Dutchess County, keep being exactly who you are. You define this corner of our community. You continue to inspire, impress, challenge all of us. And from me, a guy who was given the temporary honor of stewardship in this community, I just want to say thank you. This is, I'm sure for you, Brian, but for, and for you will be, Joel, it was the greatest ride of my life with the greatest of honors and the greatest of challenges, and I know that I was very, very, and am very, very grateful to all of you. So thank you for allowing me to ramble on a bit behind this podium, but every time I come back to this building, I feel like I'm home again. And Brian, I think that you've defined your place here. It is within you, and for that, we are grateful. And to Joel, it is within you, and now, Tivoli will be in your hands. So God bless to all of you and thanks.[1148.82][1148.82](Applause).
Members of the Village Board of Trustees, Clerk Gennella, Deputy Clerk Roth, County Executive, Judge Clark, Judge Ludwig, Legislator Struensky, my fellow residents. I stand before you this evening with a sense of accomplishment. Four years ago, I sought the office of mayor with a pledge to bring Tivoli back. It is my hope that together, over the last four years, we have achieved that goal, but we should realize that there is still much work to do. When I decided to seek the office of mayor, I did so after much thought and consideration as to whether or not after eight years in village government, I was the right person for the job. The decision was not made in haste, nor simply to challenge one person for the sake of running. I did so after meeting with residents that I am proud to call neighbors and friends, people like Jenny LaBarber, Margaret Lemon, Claude Potts, Karen Cleveland, Holtegard Edlin, Barbara Rubaton, and others, whose opinion and counsel I sought as I made the final decision to seek the office of mayor of the village of Tivoli. And once that decision was made, I knew that I had a responsibility to live up to the promise whose counsel I sought and to those I represent. I will forever be grateful to those who lent me their advice and counsel. As I look back over my 12 years as a member of this village government, there are memories that will last with me forever. As the unique community that Tivoli is, together we have seen much, and we have been there together in good times and in bad. As mayor, you were never off duty. Bad news is never delayed during the cover of night, and for those who have called me during those hours to deliver grim news, I will forever remember the compassion and strength on the other end of the line. I've been honored to have worked with many dedicated emergency service professionals such as Tommy Chrissy Sr., Mark and Patrick Hildebrand, Cheryl Hildebrand, and of course the members of the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office under the leadership of Sheriff Anderson. As I discuss those in emergency management, I would be remiss if I did not address the tragedies that are small village tests seen over the course of recent years. With more than 10 fatalities caused by accidents in four years, this village has seen far too much sadness. The dedicated men and women of our emergency departments on the local, county, and state level have earned a lasting place in my memory as mayor, and I am grateful for the bravery and compassion that so many showed during those horrible times. And before I continue, I would like to recognize the men and women of the village of Tivoli Fire Department and Rescue Squad. Would you please stand and be recognized tonight?[1346.82][1346.82](Applause). To Bard College, who this village grieved with during a dark hour in January of 2014, the strength shown by the college community under the leadership of President Botting during and immediately following that incident proved that Bard, like Tivoli, is a unique community, one in which relationships are strong but strengthened when tested. While the administration and I may not have always agreed on certain issues, I believe our friendship and our relationship was proven during that dark hour, and I will forever admire the college president for his leadership during that time. While tragedies we faced, Mother Nature also was a force to be reckoned with during my tenure. Not one, but two hurricanes brought flooding to our village, and a major summer rainstorm dropped nearly a half a foot of water down in our village in only a matter of hours. With sections of roads washed out, basements flooded, and much damage to yards, fields, and structures, under the leadership of our Public Works Superintendent Jim Simmons, Tivoli made it through those storms, and I am continued to be grateful and impressed by the style in which our DPW handled those crises without complaint and worked to ensure that our village would be safe and taken care of. Would you please join me in acknowledging our superintendent with more than 30 years of experience, Jim Simmons, who's here tonight? Jim, thank you very much.[1448.82][1448.82](Applause). Doctor Simmons. I also want to thank the Dutchess County Department of Emergency Response under the leadership of Dana Smith for their continuous efforts to lend support and/or advice during those trying times. We talked as a community when I became your mayor about the need to improve infrastructure within the village. This village made a commitment to do just that, and over the course of four years, drainage along Montgomery Street, Spring Street, and Broadway has been approved. Today, new sidewalks have been laid along Broadway and Washburn. Plans are being developed as we speak tonight for a new sidewalk that would allow access to Tivoli's waterfront. And a major redesign improvement project took place earlier this year, welcoming residents and visitors into our village through a new redesigned intersection, but yet we still maintain our historic feel. Again, my sincere thanks to our superintendent, to our former village engineer, Ron Vantalista, to Peter Sotero of Morse Associates and his entire team. I am very pleased that we kept our commitment, and the results are obvious. As village representatives, we as elected officials have a responsibility to ensure those that placed us in office have his or her voices heard. Residents should never feel that those who are casting votes or making decisions on their behalf are doing so without the input of the constituency. I am proud that we have opened the lines of communication and dialogue from the village hall to residents. Today, residents have an opportunity to address the board on agenda items at the beginning of meetings rather than pointlessly at the end when votes have been cast. A quarterly newsletter has kept residents abreast of various issues, events, and information. Social media is used linking the village with newspapers and other media outlets throughout the Hudson Valley, the state, and even nationally. The conversations with the mayor series prove to be successful, as well as routine email communications. In addition, I am honored that the local newspapers and media outlets, including the Bard Free Press, routinely ask for sit-down interviews to discuss the state of our village on an array of topics. Tivoli no longer is the best-kept secret. In 2009, then Assemblyman Mark Molinaro, former Senator Steve Solan, and I called upon the New York State Transportation Department to place a flashing caution light at the intersection of 9G and Broadway. That request was denied. Following another tragic death at that same intersection, we again called on the DOT to at the very least conduct a traffic study. Again, that request was denied. While the state didn't make some changes, it was the opinion of this government and community that more changes were necessary. Five years later, with a public campaign, factual-based letters, and with an entire community pushing, the New York State finally heard our call, and with an entire community, we now have seen the result of a flashing light at that intersection. I want to thank those who worked tirelessly to lend their support to this effort, former trustee Vincent Manah, Bard College Supervisor Sue Crane, our county executive, former Senator Steve Solan, and the hundreds and hundreds of people who signed an online petition and sent their own letters to the DOT. This truly was a Tivoli effort. In 2009, the New York State Comptroller released a critical statement of Tivoli's finances. With several points, the Comptroller expressed caution and cited areas in which the village was lacking oversight in its bookkeeping and financial structure. Village residents were, and rightly so, concerned about their tax dollars and oversight. When I sought office, I pledged that by working with the treasurer and this village board, we would strengthen our financial structure. Just two weeks ago, for the second year in a row, the New York State Comptroller released a statement that today, no fiscal stress is detected in the village of Tivoli. In fact, Tivoli not only rates lower than villages throughout the Hudson Valley for detection of fiscal stress, we are lower than villages throughout the entire state of New York. We have built up our water and sewer funds dramatically. In 2002, the fund balance for the water line was $39,000. Today, that line is close to $70,000. In 2012, the sewer line was $31,000. Today, that same line is close to $100,000. Hearing the concerns of residents, we took steps to ensure that residents were aware of every penny being spent. Today, each month under my direction, the monthly finances of the village are placed online for all to review. Budget workshops have been open to the public, and all information has been made available, allowing residents to see the budget process in real time. I want to sincerely thank my right-hand person during each and every budget, our clerk treasurer Linda Gennella, who takes your responsibilities seriously and professionally as custodian of the residents' finances. She is truly one of the most dedicated public servants I have ever had the honor to work with. I also want to acknowledge our bookkeeper, Michelle Zagorski, who also brings a sense of professionalism to the financial aspect of our government. Together, Linda and Michelle have worked tirelessly... Together, Linda and Michelle have worked tirelessly to strengthen the village's financial structure, and the results are obvious. Please join me in acknowledging my financial team. Linda, please extend your hand. Over the last four years, we have made significant and necessary repairs to the village hall and other government buildings. We have addressed major legal and financial issues that we faced upon taking office. Roof repair and preventative maintenance to the village has taken place. The elevator here at the village hall was repaired following damage caused by heavy rains and flooding. We have updated the smoke and fire alarms throughout the village hall. We've made lighting improvements to the Tivoli Firehouse, as well as replacing gutters. Under the leadership of trustee Robin Bruno, we invested over $100,000 into our park. We made the park handicapped accessible for children with disabilities. And despite the criticisms of some that were, that we were too drastically changing the appearance of the park, we redesigned an entire park to make it wheelchair accessible, including a wheelchair swing, allowing children with and without disabilities to play together. We truly made Tivoli's park a center for all. We also committed to reinstate Tivoli's summer rec program, and like the park project under trustee Bruno's leadership, today, Tivoli is about to begin its fifth year of a summer camp for its children in their own park. We also made a commitment four years ago and kept it, that the village, in an effort to offset costs and reduce the need of tax dollars, would seek grant funding opportunities. I am proud to say that over the last four years, this village has secured over $300,000 in grant funding. We took dramatic steps to pay off longstanding debt. This included debt to vendors that have been allowed to pile up, as well as several large bonds. Village legal matters that have been sitting at my desk on the first day I became mayor have been closed out. An updated lease agreement with the Tivoli Free Library in the village has been signed, protecting both the village and the library, and strengthening the relationship between the two parties. A long-lasting property issue that dated back several, to several of my predecessors has also finally been closed. We rewrote policies protecting the village. With the guidance of trustee Susan Israidi and our planner, Michelle Gredd, we changed our zoning codes to fit and with the character of our ever-evolving village, and will continue to update the codes to reflect the village as it stands today. Despite much negative and false information, we took unpopular steps to protect the liability of the village when an individual put the village at a significant risk. And I want to thank my deputy mayor, Joel Griffith, and our counsel, Christine Shaw, for their advice on this issue. We have worked to strengthen the relationships between the village and the business community by forming an alliance between the two. By being spearheaded by trustee Jean Anne Schneider, this alliance will work and will make Tivoli a destination stop for everyone to enjoy and to make Tivoli the ever-growing, unique business community that it is. Together as a community, we realized that we needed to do more to honor the brave souls of Tivoli that defined our freedoms, strengthening that relationship between the village and the Harris Smith Legion Post. Together, we worked to erect new monuments on Monument Hill that recognized all the Tivolians that wore the American flag on their shoulder. And by collaborating with Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, we introduced a new generation to Tivoli's heroes right here in our community. And I'm so proud of the relationship that exists between the post and the village. Gentlemen and ladies, you will always have a lasting spot in my heart. And my friends, would you join me in recognizing Tivoli's heroes, the men and women of the Harris Smith American Legion Post? Realizing that we are living in an unprecedented, physically challenging time and needing to think outside the box to ensure services, Tivoli partnered with the Town of Red Hook and the Village of Red Hook to apply for a $79,000 grant study to study the feasibility of sharing services and/or consolidating highway departments. With the Town of Red Hook as the lead agency, we are working with a superb consulting team of Tim Weideman and Peter Fairweather, who is here tonight. Peter, thank you for joining us. The team is reviewing and addressing potential, reviewing the potentials to whether or not Tivoli can consolidate its highway departments and share services, equipment, and/or staff. I am pleased to work with these municipal leaders within the town and village, and my colleague trustee Schneider on this project, I thank you. Very grateful to Dutchess County Executive Mark Mullenaro for his insight to provide such funding to local communities. When I first saw public office in Tivoli, I said at the time, "There's no Republican or Democrat way to fix a road, no Republican or Democrat way to fill a pothole, and no Republican/Democrat way to build a park. There is simply the right way." That being said, I would caution those in village and town government to be cognizant of the fact that Tivoli prides itself on its nonpartisan style of governing. In all six of my elections, I was honored to have had the support of residents with various political affiliations. I have appointed more individuals to serve in official capacities that do not share my political affiliation than do. Here in Tivoli and across New York State this evening, villages are holding elections for mayors, trustees, and justices. Those who have spoken of partisan politics within this historic building and village halls across New York State surely do not know that the cornerstone of a community such as Tivoli is a resident who chooses to give back selflessly, not for political gain. And Tivoli residents are certainly wise to those who have chosen to blur the lines, and I believe those results will be evident tonight when the votes are tallied. I have been honored to work with a superb team within this government. Our fire department and rescue squad is second to none. Bravery, compassion, and dedication define the men and women of our department. Our justice system, under the leadership of the Honorable Howard Clark, is a fair and just courtroom. Your Honor, you are certainly an able jurist, and Tivoli has been served well by you and your department. To our DPW, with superintendent Simmons at the hounds, these men, no matter the condition, respond to the call and ensure that the needs of our residents are taken care of. Jim's institutional knowledge of our water and sewer system is priceless and second to none. To Bonnie Carrado and the Tivoli Free Library, you stand as a welcoming center to our young children, our families, and all within this village. Their dedication for learning is obvious and recognized and admirable. To those who serve on various boards and committees, your voluntarism and dedication to the community you call home is so much appreciated, and you have helped to move this village forward. Deputy Mayor Griffith, it is with certainty that I say you will assume this office in the coming weeks. Please know that you have an entire village pulling behind you and wishing you nothing but success. To the board of trustees and former trustees, it has been an honor to serve with all of you. We have worked together, and we've made a great team, and Tivoli is better for it. To my predecessor and one of my dearest friends, Mark Mullenaro, your guidance, counsel, and most importantly, your friendship has been invaluable to me, and I am forever grateful for you for introducing me to this community. To my counsel, Christine Shaw, who exemplifies your professionalism, I continue to be impressed by your intelligence, knowledge, and understanding of the law, and I thank you for your counsel and foresight. To my amazing administrative team, Linda Gennella and Claire Roth, I said four years ago, "I could not and would not do this job without you." Any success that we have seen has been because you were by my side in doing what was right for this village, and I will forever be grateful. To my parents, who have supported me for so many years, not just within my public life, but through everything, the ups and downs, I stand here tonight because of you. To Kristen, your love and support these last few months have made me stronger, and I thank you. To my sons, who are hopefully watching this, Karen and Shane, who have sacrificed so much for your dad to do what he loves to do, because I always felt it was right. You make me proud every day. And finally, tonight, to this village and its residents, thank you for the honor you bestowed upon me. I will forever be humbled by the support and confidence you showed me. Together, we made a difference, and today, Tivoli stands as a community that cares and a place that we are proud to call home. So tonight, I end where I left off four years ago. I made a big promise to this village that I would not let you down and that I would make you proud. It is my sincere hope, my sincere hope, that you feel that I kept that promise. May God bless you, and may He continue to look down and bless this village to be so proudly called home. I bid you a very heartfelt good night. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
And with that, I have an interesting motion to adjourn. Motion's been made by the deputy mayors. Is there a second?
Second.
Ladies and gentlemen, we stand adjourned. Thank you again, ladies and gentlemen. It's a great deal to me. Thank you so much, and God bless. Thank you.